Good evening, this is the City Council Meeting of October 19th, 2015. If you stand with me for the Plenarations, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Clerk, to the roll.
Councilmember Altough.
Here.
Councilmember Ellison.
Here.
Councilmember Mayor.
Here.
And Mayor Hedges.
Here. Item two is the agenda, and items and changes there.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Item second. Then move to second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? Item three is approval of the minutes of our last meeting on October 5th. You're in our packet for review. Any additions or corrections there?
I move that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting.
Item second. Thank you. We move to second to approve the minutes of the October 5th meeting. All in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? Item four is approval of the accounts payable for the bills for the last couple of weeks. They're there. Any concerns? I had one concern, one question, yes, not any concerns. Under the State of Michigan, what's an IFT?
That's an industrial facilities tax. It's an industrial facilities tax, and we have to send them, we collect it as a little operating tax, we have to send that to the state.
It was all in?
I move that we approve the accounts payable as presented.
Item second. We move to second to approve the accounts payable, and for this we need a roll call.
Councilmember Altough.
Yes.
Councilmember Ellison.
Yes.
Councilmember Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor Hedges.
Yes. Item five is succinct comments for items that do not appear on the agenda, and we do have one introduction. You've given one, I think you have an honor tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce our newest part-time officer, Sharon Braun. Sharon was born and raised in Vernon, Connecticut, one of seven children. She was enlisted in the Marine Corps in 1994 as a military police officer and served 20-plus years in the Marine Corps as a military police officer, a dare officer, and a criminal investigator. She deployed multiple times into support of the War on Terrorism. She's married to her husband Todd for 15 years, and they have two children, Jacob, who's 14, and Megan, who's 11. All three are present in the back. She holds a bachelor's in management and an associate's in general studies from the American Military University, and she's been decorated several times, including Navy Accommodation Medals, Navy and Marine Corps Achievement Medals, and several certificates of combination and letters of appreciation. She's a 2015 graduate of the Grand Valley State University Military Police Academy, and she was certified as of today under the Michigan Coalition of Law Enforcement Officers by the State of Michigan for the Lowell Police Department. So I'd like to introduce Sharon Braun to you.
Anything you'd like to say?
Just, it's a pleasure for me to be here and also to be able to have the opportunity to serve the people in the city of Lowell.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I had the pleasure of meeting Sharon one morning as I was stumbling through City Hall, but very impressed and welcome to Lowell.
Thank you.
One other introduction I'd like to make would be that we've got Jordan Meyer in the back there. Jordan, stand up, say hello. Jordan's a senior at Lowell High School, and he's doing a little work on city government as well as government, so he's here to witness our proceedings tonight, and I'll be getting together later in the week, and I'll be answering as many questions that I can, so hopefully they won't be too tough. Welcome, Jordan. If anybody else would like to stand up and address the council for items that do not appear on the agenda, this is where they do it. We ask that you keep your comments to about five minutes in your name, sir.
Roger Luer on 681 Bridgewood Court, also a co-chairman of the Compensation Commission, and it's that hat that I wear as I stand before you this evening. The committee, I'm a co-chairman with Teresa Beecham. Teresa has had surgery and is not able to be here. The rest of my committee has other commitments, so it gives me the opportunity to be the one who presents what we have worked on over the past couple of months. We want to let you know that there will be a letter to the editor that will be more complete than what I'll be sharing with you tonight, but we wanted to share this with you first so that we could personally give commendation to this council for the work that has been, your work, good work throughout this past year, and we greatly appreciate what you were doing and the work. We had an opportunity to talk different ones, if I had a chance to visit with Mr. Altough and others, have visited with others, and just as a way to kind of talk about what is going on and to give a chance to hear firsthand some of the work that is being done here. And I want to read this paragraph. "We who are members of the Compensation Commission seek to bring positive recognition to the service provided by our council and our city manager. We know that each member of our council gives generously of their time, and as we added up the hours," this was really interesting, "as we added up the hours of service given, it is easy to see that each council member gives over 500 hours per year in public service." I don't know if you realize that's all. I'm sure it felt like that, sometimes probably even more than that. "They attend monthly meetings of the council, special meetings in development of the river, walk master plan, and special work sessions for strategic planning. They serve as liaison to Parks and Recreation, Downtown Development, Art Board," just to mention a few of what goes on. "We're not sure the public is fully aware of all the work that you as council people do, and we want to recognize that. I know as a Compensation Committee, we pay attention to what's going on, and we just believe it is time that we lift up some of the applause that is important to you, to recognize that there's a lot of us within this community, a lot of us, who are really appreciative of the work that you all do and the work that takes place here, but also in the work sessions, and I know there's a lot of extra hours that are placed in some of those strategic sessions, and we believe it is important that this council continue to grow towards strategic leadership. We have probably seen all that we ever want to see in our lives, and I'm sure you also, that leadership which is personal agenda with a sense that breaks any sense of unity. What we're really pleased is when we see the strategic work that is happening here in the council. So we wish to continue to encourage you in that direction, to let you know that, yes, we have been watching, we have enjoyed the positive work that has happened here. We're very much aware of our deep loss with Jim Hall and the work that he did, but it just helped to raise for us just how important each of you are to this council and to this community, and we encourage you to move forward, as I said, with strategic leadership, to move forward with planning and holding up the values and the decorum that is so important as example to all of us who are leaders within this community. Again, as a Compensation Committee, we want to say thank you. Thank you very much for what you're doing."
Mr. Rutter?
I know some of you have already got my card probably a couple of times now. I'm telling you why I'm here. I'm Catherine Henry. Some of you may know me. I'm an attorney from Belling. But the reason why I'm here today is because I'm running for the 86th District House of Representatives seat, which the current representative will be termed out at the end of her current term, so I won't be running against the incumbent, and it's my goal to make it to every single government or public meeting that I can in the district to get to know what's important to the people in the entire district. There are 11 townships, three cities, and two villages, so it's going to be hard for me to make it to every single meeting more than once, but I will try very hard. In fact, I think there's a little township meeting going on at the same time tonight, so I'm going to try to run over there as well. But I am local in the sense that, well, it's not that far away. It feels closer than a lot of Caledonia or the other parts of the district, and I've provided all of you with my card, and for the people in the audience, I'm going to leave a little pile of cards out on the table there because it'd be very important whether people think that they like me or would want to vote for me or endorse me in any way. That would mean a lot to me, but what'd also mean a lot to me is whether they would like me or not, or vote for me or not, that they would feel comfortable in communicating with me, email me, Facebook me, go through my website, tell me what issues are most important to you and to them at a state level in importance, so that I can try to really understand by the time that I hopefully do get elected, I will really know what is important to the people in this district. And I have to get started now, even though the primary is not until October, excuse me, August 2nd, 2016, and the election's not until November, it's going to take me quite a bit of time to get to 90,000 people and find out where everybody stands. So thank you very much for letting me come and introduce myself tonight, and please, everyone, let me know who you are and what's important to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else?
Tony Ellison, Lowell 7th North Division in Lowell. I want to respond to what Councilmember Matt Mayor has saying the last several council comments. First, that the Schneider Manor meeting was primarily and solely to meet the new candidates. I've brought copies of the newsletter and advertisements for the meeting. They all state "meet the candidates" for City Council. Nowhere does it say "meet the new candidates," and in fact, three of the candidates were not invited to the meeting. It further states that Lowell, that the Voice Candidates will, among other things, make all meetings welcoming and transparent. Considering they only invited their three candidates of the six who were running and stopped my wife at the door saying, "This meeting is not for you," I don't consider that welcoming or transparent. Next, during his inaccurate descriptions of the meeting, he states, "If this upsets you, you should be running." I want to point out that you've never run for office. You were appointed to this office, and in fact, you seem to think that since you were a write-in candidate, the appointment was automatic. That is completely wrong. Over the course of your service, you've been wrong many times. You've missed many council meetings, and to my knowledge, you've only attended one coffee of council, coffee with council, and no work sessions. You've been quoted in the paper as saying, "I didn't sign up for this." You didn't sign up for anything. You were asked to serve on the council, and you accepted. I bring all of this up because the Voice Group considers you to be part of what they call excellence in governance. If this is what they call excellence, then I have grave reservations about the Voice Candidates. And last, a letter in the paper states that Sharon was allowed to speak at the meeting. After two hours of sitting in the audience, she was asked, "Would you ever have a meeting like this?" That was the extent of her being allowed to speak. This is what the Voice Group calls a "fair and open meeting." I call that deception, half-truths, and the squelching of dissenting voices. I believe this is how the three Voice Candidates, along with Barb Barber and Peggy Colbert, intend to govern if elected to the City Council. Thank you.
Anyone else here to address the council today? Sign them, then we'll move on to whole business, and we have strategic goals reported as well as pending council comments or reports. Mr. Howe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Nothing new on the strategic goals report? Can I answer any questions that anybody has? Under pending council projects, the downtown tower removals, that is completed. The tower was removed on October 12th and 13th. Unfortunately, it took an extra day to load the section of the tower under trailers to be taken away, but the project is now complete, and with the consensus of the council, I'd like to remove this item from pending council project.
All right. Yes.
Other than that, can I answer any other questions?
Thank you for that. Thank you. We'll move on to item seven then, new business, and we have Wendy Okelby from Grand River Revitalization Project with a presentation for us. Welcome, Wendy.
You know, before Wendy starts this project, I'm going to try to go off through the slides, and so we're going to be doing some hand signals or whatever it is, back and forth, but Wendy is with the, she's the director of my environmental programs for Grand Valley Metro Council, and as you all know, we are members of the Grand Valley Metro Council, and that group does a lot of great work in transportation, the area of transportation. They do a lot of great work in the area of Regis, which is a regional GIS system. It's basically where we take data and we apply the data to maps. And the other area that really has developed over the last couple of years is the environmental programs, and Wendy's been leading that group and working with some folks at Grand Rapids on this specific project, and so she's here tonight, and Wendy would welcome you to the council meeting. I'll do my best to advance through the slides. Any questions?
Are there lights still? Or can everybody see them?
I can hit the one that will make that better. Don't blame Teresa.
Well, thank you, Mark, and thank you, Mayor and council, for having me here. I was excited to talk about this project. He's not there yet. No, we can't. This is, it's the project about to restore the rapids to the Grand River. It's called now the Grand River Revitalization Project. It's changed its name a few times, but the concept has remained the same, to bring the rapids back to the Grand River. So hit the arrow. So a lot of, it's started with the Green Grand Rapids, which was an update to the master plan for the city of Grand Rapids, and they were trying to incorporate green infrastructure into their master plans. And one of the topics in that update was to activate the river. How can we use the river as a valued asset instead of turning our backs on the river? And so through that process, a local champion emerged, the Grand Rapids Whitewater, and so they, the city said, "Well, go restore the river." And so these two guys have garnered a lot of attention and a lot of support, and so six years later, it's coming, moving forward, and it is going to become a reality. So they hired a engineering firm out of Colorado, a restoration engineer, and they've been doing a lot of the work. They're a restoration firm, but then with partnerships with the city of Grand Rapids and the Grand Valley Metro Council, and many, many other partners and people are involved in this project. One of the things that happened in the very beginning of it was that we were selected as an urban waters federal partnership location, which means that the 14 federal agencies are actually coming together, talking to each other, and working together to find ways that they can all work together on this one project. Instead of having everyone in their silos working on this, they're all actually talking to each other. We have a monthly phone call with all of these federal agencies to see how they can help in their specific agencies with this project. It's Department of Education, Department of Interior, Department of Ags, so all of these different agencies getting together and working together. So that was a really a milestone. So people always ask, "Why is it called Grand Rapids?" People come to Grand Rapids and don't see the rapids. So, and they were asking that question back in 1913, "Where are the rapids?" And so what we've done through this project is tried to determine, "Where are they?" And tried to discover sort of what happened to the rapids. So we needed to find a little bit of history, and this is called the Village of Kent, which was actually Grand Rapids, so it wasn't built this way or called this. This was originally what it was. This is because the rapids have not really existed in the river since before photography existed. There are no photos of what the river used to look like, but there are some drawings and depictions. Go ahead. This is one of my favorite quotes from, "Before the river was changed by the work of man, the rapids had a nearly uniform descent for about a mile, sufficient to give a decided, turbulent, and wild appearance to the waters and to make a noise that broke the stillness of the forest and echoed from the neighboring hills." So they were very impressive. It was about a mile long of rapids through the city. But we were trying to figure out, where did they go and why are they not there anymore? And it was really because of the logging industry. Throughout the region and throughout the watershed, the trees were being logged and floated down the river, but they would get hung up on the rapids. Grand Rapids was the furniture capital of the world, so they needed this lumber. So they built the dams to drown out the rapids, to raise the water level, drown out the rapids, and then be able to funnel the logs into the channels and canals along the river to get them to the factories. But that's, you know, not its use anymore. They've dewatered it, dredged it, a lot of the limestone that existed in the bottom of the river was used to build a lot of the buildings in Grand Rapids. You can actually see some of that, St. Mark's Church and some of the other buildings. So there's some photographs of how they manipulated the river, and in doing that, they actually narrowed it by about half the width of the river, and of course, experienced flooding after that. So back in 1904 with the big floods, and saw your sign out there, and some floods here, too. But the river was used as transportation, it was used as water, it was used as a power source, but it really doesn't have those uses anymore. So the dam as it exists now is not really serving a function as far as the river right now. So we wanted to look at, first of all, no one knew who owned the dam. The Department of Natural Resources said the city owned it, the city said the Department of Natural Resources owned it. No one was really quite sure who owned the dam, and it's never been inspected, which was kind of a surprise to everyone. So it was built back in the mid-1800s, in 1927. The city decided to, it was falling apart, they decided to build this concrete cap over the dam, and since they held the contract to do that work, it was decided that they owned the dam. So that was really the only decision that was made, but so it really hasn't had any work done to it since 1927. They do have a lifespan, which is very nearing that time right now. So when they built that dam, downstream of that, however, it started to, it lowered the water, and back then, the river was mainly used as a sewer. So all of the sewage went into the river, when the water level would get very low in the summer, it didn't smell very good at all. So they built these, what they called beautification dams, and if you go downtown and you can see these four low-head dams that still exist, but it was really just to keep the water over the bottom and keep the smell down. But again, with the city having separated their sewers from their stormwater, sewage doesn't go into the river anymore. They don't really have much use anymore as well, and you can see what, some of the construction during that time. So we wanted to find out about the river, and there really hadn't been much research on the river, and why were there rapids here, and would it even be possible to restore them? So the first thing we found out was this is a very, very unique river system. From, let's just say from Lowell to Grand Rapids, it's a pretty uniform, not a very steep descent. From Ann Street in Grand Rapids, two miles down to Fulton Street in Grand Rapids, so right through the heart of downtown, the river falls 18 feet. And then from Fulton Street, 40 miles to Lake Michigan, it only falls four feet. So it's a very regionally rare occurrence, though we actually have rapids in the river. You can't go to Muskegon and return the rapids. You can't go to the Kalamazoo, they just don't have them there. And it's really made because of the geologic formations that we have here in Michigan. If you can see that red part that rings through the middle, that's called Bayport limestone. It's kind of regionally rare rock as well, but right where it meets the Michigan Formation is where the rapids occur, and it just happens to be right in the middle of the city. So it is kind of definitely a regionally rare. So what that is, is that the bedrock that's in the river, which is also kind of unusual for a Midwest lower peninsula river to have bedrock as its bottom, a lot of them are sandy, silty bottoms, but the bedrock is there, and just by lowering the water level, the bedrock would be exposed behind the Sixth Street Dam, and that was a very exciting discovery, mostly for some of the habitat that that was offered. So what about the dam? I mean, I'm sure if any of you have been to Grand Rapids, it, there's a lot of people that congregate around the dam. It's kind of a landmark of the city, but right now, it's really very dangerous. We have at least one death there now every year. People are getting, with the river being cleaner and things being more exciting about the river, people are wanting to get in, and it's very dangerous, the way that the formation of the dam creates a hydraulic at the bottom, at the base of the dam, that just puts people in kind of a washing machine. It's very, very difficult, very dangerous to get out of. So part of the whole project is about the safety. But one of the things we did find out, people were saying, "Oh, you can't remove the dam, there's toxic sediments behind there, it would be this huge mess, and we'd kill everything in Lake Michigan." So we decided to find that out, so we had a brownfields grant through Grand Valley Metro Council, and we tried to sample the sediment that was behind the dam, and when they went to sample it, all they were hitting was bedrock. There's very, very, very little sediment behind the dam, and part of that is because it is a very shallow system. I think it just kind of gets scoured out over the year, but also there is a very large engineered six-by-six-foot hole at the base of the dam, which, not really sure why it was built that way, but it kind of acts as a sluice hole or something to be able to flush all the sediments out. So the only element that was found was arsenic, which is pretty much found in every stream in lower peninsula, so it wasn't, there were no toxic sediments behind the dam. So that really expanded the project to be able to look above the dam and see what we could do to restore the rapids. So a lot of it is the, just the habitat. You know, it's with the dam there, a lot of the native fish can't get up here, they can't get to Lowell for people to fish for walleye and some of the perch that are there. So, but one of the greatest, go ahead, so one of the greatest fish that used to be in the Grand River were the sturgeon, and they're magnificent sort of old, old fish that can get to be 100 pounds, eight feet long, and the rumors are they were so thick in the river that you could walk across the backs of them. They started thinking of them as a nuisance, but they would catch them and hang them, and they were so full of oil that they would fuel their boats. They would just throw them into boats to fuel the boats. But they've lost their habitat because that bedrock shelf that was before, that's where they used to spawn, and so they can't navigate through that dam or the fish ladder, so by taking down the dam partially and allowing the sturgeon up, they'll have that original spawning ground. But it would also open it up to many other fish species in the system. Another thing that we found through our discoveries was this snuffbox mussel, which is a federally endangered species, which is great news, that means that it's back and the river's healthy enough to have it. Bad news is it adds a lot more permitting and a lot more complications to the project. But they've been out for a couple of years now looking at trying to find the snuffbox. They found five live snuffbox mussels. But if you've been following the dam at Lyons just upstream from you, they found about 17,000 snuffbox mussels. So they have many more to relocate and keep survive, keep alive during their dam removal process, but we still have to address the snuffbox. And we'll be in time for a short little video, but that's okay. If you just hover over the bottom of it, there'll be an arrow, so, and then just click on that. So the snuffbox, they, we call them basically biological rocks, so they sit on the bottom, but they have a relationship with the log perch, which is also a native species, so the log perch comes and flips over rocks to find food, and they come upon a snuffbox mussel, and they'll flip the mussel thinking that it's a rock to get its food, and the snuffbox will grab onto the fish, and as he's doing that, he's shooting his eggs into the gills of the log perch, and then he does let go, kind of stops, but he does let go, and then, not in this video, but you can go ahead. And then as the fish swims upstream, he deposits the eggs along the stream, so that's how they propagate. So we have to make sure that the habitat is good enough for the mussel, but also for the log perch to be able to have that relationship. So in order to do that, downstream of the dam would be 47 acres of boulders and substrate and some of the big rocks in the habitat that used to be in the river that were excavated out previously. So why this dam is important, though, it's really the lowermost barrier to Lake Michigan, so anything migrating from Lake Michigan, that's the first barrier that they hit, is the Sixth Street Dam in Grand Rapids. the Sixth Street Dam in Grand Rapids. So one of the big concerns are invasive species. And so sea lamprey have been a big concern of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service and a lot of the fisheries in, in Lake Michigan. They did hurt the lake trout quite a bit, the lake trout fishery and our charter fishery. So they do think if they got upstream, they kind of devastate everything in the whole watershed. We certainly don't want to do that. So in order to lower the dam, there has to be some other sort of barrier built upstream. They're proposing to do that about three miles upstream that would meet the criteria for stopping lamprey, but then it would also allow native fish and other fish to pass through it or around it. So it would be an adjustable barrier. So it would only be up when lamprey are migrating, and then at all other times it would be down to allow for normal river flows. This is kind of a schematic of the crest height and how it would be an adjustable barrier, sort of an inflatable bladder inside these metal gates that would go up and down. Another thing we discovered, any of the rowers here, it's a great, the Grand River just upstream by Riverside Park is a wonderful location for all the regattas that we've had around town. And they have, it's a very unique situation in an urban area to have that type of rowing pool. And so there are chances with this lamprey barrier with the adjustable height to make it actually meet international standards for a rowing event, which would be a very economic draw for the area. A lot of high schools and area colleges use that. So as I, when I started, I talked about this small project that we were thinking of, but then just below the dam, but then when we found out that there weren't toxic sediments above that, okay, it kind of expanded the project. So now really the whole project is from Lamro Park up in Plainfield Township down to Millennium Park, is the official project, but they're really thinking of it as a regional project because it would be a regional resource and having, having this type of rapid environment in the Lower Peninsula would be quite a draw. So really the goals are return the rapids for everyone, improve the habitat and conductivity of the river and its functions, and then create economic opportunities. And it's really not just in Grand Rapids, but trying to build on the momentum of, you know, upstream and downstream. And these are just some of the visuals, because they've really been looking at the river corridor, how can we improve the river corridor to get people to the river, have connections to the river, and use some of that space a little bit more wisely than having salt domes on the river edge or, you know, DPW yards on the river edge. Just try to make that either green space or public space, trying to connect people to the river. So these are some of the examples. And Lowell's a big part of that, having a riverwalk and having so many trails come through and with a flat river. So looking at how can we sort of enhance the, the public opportunity to get people to the river? And there's a lot of other areas that we can connect, some of the state game areas, not only for people corridors, but for habitat corridors, and looking at being sort of resilient in the future for planning our rivers wisely. So just a lot of the green space and a lot of the, the planning that's going on here. So as I said, the Grand Rapids is making a lot of investment in their public spaces to be able to use the river wisely. So I'm really here today to inform you, just so upstream and downstream neighbors, trying to have you understand the impacts. And questions? Building on the momentum that, that is looking at this regional project right now. So I guess I can take any questions now, or?
I would do.
Well, first of all, any questions to the council concerning this particular project?
Are you planning to do some type of a kayak hub course then? Or would it just be more naturally easier for people to kayak that area?
Sort of both. It would be, it would be just a natural river system, but the river engineer that we have from Colorado knows how to make waves. And so at certain flow rates, like if the river's running at six thousand CFS, people might say, "Oh, that boulder down there is a great play wave." Because they just, the whitewater kayakers just get in the water and sort of play on one wave. But then you have the boat and the passage up and down the river. But they are looking at creating a water trail from Grand Haven to Portland. So Ottawa County has a very well-established and very well-mapped water trail, which is basically, you know, if you're in the river, there's maps of where can you get out, where are the access sites, where's public lands, where are some convenience stores, you know, where can they go? So really Kent County and Ionia County don't have that yet, and so that's one thing the state is helping to organize some groups to work on that.
Nancy, go ahead. I'll probably chance ask a question.
I'd like to ask, I know they've been fighting one species of fish, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the name of it right now, and a species of mussel that comes in from other areas that they're trying to keep out of the Great Lakes that have already gotten into it. What's going to stop them from coming into these rivers?
Are you thinking of Asian carp?
West warmhole?
Yeah. Really the management strategies for the state right now, if Asian carp do get into Lake Michigan, kind of game over. I mean, there's really nothing, unless you want a twenty-five-foot wall, you know, in the river, there's not a lot you can do. So they're really trying to manage down in Chicago and trying to manage it there. They are not yet really managing to stop that species. As far as the zebra mussels, they're not so much in a river system. And those, you know, those have been in Lake Michigan and a lot of the inland lakes. And it's kind of, the quagga mussels are now coming up and the zebra mussels are in their down cycle. But really it's the, it's the endangered species that are the most of concern in the whole project.
What do you have, any cards you might leave on the back table or?
Sure. I have a, I have a few brochures.
Catch that on the way out, so.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. Moving on then to item B, the downtown clock repairs and upgrades. Our four clock. Mark, what's up?
Yeah, just, I just shut down, I assumed that would knock you out.
Yeah.
Yes, we have a quote from the Burden Company to repair and upgrade the clock mechanisms and the covers of the downtown clock. The, we've been looking at it for several weeks actually, and we know that people are using the clock because as it started to be five minutes slow and ten minutes slow, we were getting more and more phone calls from people saying, "Hey, the clock needs to be adjusted, clock needs to be adjusted." As it turns out, the inside of the equipment's to be replaced. And while we're doing that, it seems only prudent to replace the covers. The covers are pretty faded and also the hands of the clock, it would be part of the new components. The clock was originally purchased in, right around 1997. It was part of the street escape project that the Downtown Development Authority took on. I, the reason I'm coming to you today is because we have money set aside in the general fund budget for facility repairs and those types of things. And I'd like to at least know that the council would be supportive of repairing the clock, and I'd like to get the company moving forward. My plan would be to go up to the Downtown Development Authority and ask them whether or not they would actually pay for, for the repairs. You know, I can't assume that they're going to say yes. They originally installed the clock, I think they'd be open to this type of repair. But I'd like to get the process going, I'd like to get the process moving. So that's why I'm coming to you to see whether or not we could use general fund dollars to, to fix the clock.
Okay. And also Dr. Reagan here, so we can't throw any kills his way with the DDA and sits off inside his office and so forth. But anyway, yeah, a great number of us always put that clock as we drive by and say, "Pissing." Right. And I think anybody else that might be visiting our community, well, it just might be right to have the right time. But any other council questions or concerns?
I just had to ask a couple of questions. I mean, it's almost twenty years old, and this is the first time we've had to do any type of repair, even though it's an expensive one, I think, you know, it's not like it's kind of continuous problem. So it's kind of a showpiece downtown, so it is very miserable. And, you know, I think a repair every twenty years, even though it's kind of an expensive one, should probably be taken care of. But I would like to see the DEA fund it if at all possible. But I would be in favor of using general fund dollars if they wouldn't be able to help us out there.
I would too.
Is that a second?
Yes, that's a second.
Is that a question?
Fix the clock.
Fix the clock, but continue to fund the DEA.
I just, one more question though, is there just one company that does that?
Um, yes. Ron had done the work on this. He said that Burden is the, is the sole source provider for this type of clock. In fact, they have this region of the United States. And they're, one of the reasons that it took us several weeks to actually get somebody to look at it is because they're incredibly busy.
Just the general public likes to know.
Yes, yeah. And I didn't mention it, but the total, I mean, it's in your agenda, but the total cost of the, the repair, I'm calling it a repair, but they really are literally taking the guts out and putting new guts in. Total cost is four thousand five hundred and eighty dollars.
I have some together for swatch, but anyway, not me. But yeah, so four thousand five hundred dollars. You have a motion in a second?
Same there.
Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
Any votes? Thank you, that passes. Item number eight is our monthly reports, various departments in our communities, so throughout the city. Any concerns, weekly reports from our departments? But staying on then, we'll move on to item nine, council comments. And Mr. Mayor, you're up.
Fire Authority, we're waiting for an updated price on hardware from the county due to the county changing the CAD specs for the software. Now, something that we didn't know any well, for the new trucks that put software is running, up and running, runs great, and people are adapting well to it. Are looking to get some new equipment from next year, maybe hopefully grants will be available for it for grass fires, how to get more accessible to those, different machinery and whatnot equipment to mount to the vehicles. We also had hired Attorney Peter Letzman as an on-call capacity to advise us on legal issues that may come up, future concerns with the fire authority, and to help us redrafting and tweaking the current policies with the fire authority. Not in his own, he's going to be working with us, not for us. Required no retainer, he's totally on-call. Five-minute phone call he won't bill for, it's going to be a bit of a time, he's going to have to charge a little bit. His rate is two twenty-five per hour, that would be working with us from now. Our next meeting will be the ninth of November at three thirty at the Fire Barn. And he had a great quote that I just had to write in here. His quote was, "Deliberating towards a decision is an open meeting." I just thought it was a great quote, include that. Okay, that was all I have.
All right. Thank you. House, my role, Doc?
I had an airport board meeting last week, and the fixed-based operator has turned in his six months' notice to leave the airport. And the board's having a special meeting Wednesday night to address it. We've worked almost, I would say, back and forth for the last eight months trying to work out the, out the problems, and, and I thought I'd get a telephone call today, but I guess we're not going to do it. So we're going to proceed with finding a new mechanic. Call it the air.
All right, so I have to. Okay, we can approach on all of them.
Yes, the Arbor Board did meet, and we were, we're kind of waiting to see if we get some of our grants, but we do have a fall planting project that we wanted to take on. There's a few trees on Pebble Beach that need to be replaced, approximately nine trees or less, so we're going to be working with the DPW to replace the ones that need that taken care of. We're considering adopting, well, actually, we adopted the tree planting guidelines that we would like to share with the Planning Commission, so that we're all on the same page whenever we require any landscaping in the city. And that will be shared soon. Also, we're considering that new walking trail behind Walgreens, the city-owned portion of that, some potential tree placing there, depending on what their plans are. So we'd like to coordinate our efforts with the townships and what the plans are for the rest of the country before we commit to any plantings there, but that'll be possibly in the spring. And that's all the updates I have on my committees tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I did sit in on the Planning Commission meeting that Mr. Hall usually would attend. And just a quick update there, that at the last Planning Commission meeting, there were only three members out of quorum. So the meeting was unofficial, and there was just a discussion on the redevelopment liquor license process, which Mr. Howe shared with us at our last meeting. And he brought them up to date as far as that particular process, and it always helps to keep the Planning Commission informed as to the various ways that we go about doing things. There's also a late discussion on potential zoning and ordinance changes. Other than that, it was a fairly public meeting and unofficial event. On my items, Chamber of Commerce met last week, and Girls Night Out was Thursday night. It seemed to be quite successful. A lot of people throughout the downtown area and the merchants report back that things went very well, that it was quite busy, even for kind of a cold, blustery night. The Chamber of Commerce Board Director has also announced that February twenty-fifth will be their annual dinner to be held at the Grand Balute, as it had been in, in the past. So that's when they pass out the Person of the Year awards, as well as other, what they call BRIC awards for recognizing various businesses within our community for either new or doing well, or a business to keep an eye on, or give recognition for work well done within our community. And then it was also announced that October twenty-second, Rotary will be sponsoring a candidate's debate for the upcoming city council election, so I'd like you all to know about that. That will be at the School Administration Building at seven PM, October twenty-second. The Waterlight Power Board met also October fifteenth last week. Peter Hefner gave the update on the audit from the books that were looked over, and he had high praises for Steve Van Der Sluit and his staff. And they also spent some time doing a tribute to Jim Hall, who would often sit in on meetings as just a regular, ordinary citizen because he was so, so interested and needed him up a night out anyway. The MMEA hosted a legislative lunch in Lansing on September sixteenth to discuss important items dealing with municipal utilities, and the various state legislators were there, regarding upcoming energy legislation. And then System, oh, the, there was a conference also that I was able to sit in on by the MMEA, or MPVA? MMEA, okay. There's so many groups and so many acronyms and so forth. That was back on Thursday, October eighth, and I was able to hear the president of MMEA, William Cook, talk about the things that are important to our state, as well as public power. The Public Power Association President and CEO, a lady named Sue Kelly, also gave a very informative talk on the national perspective of retiring. a, uh, very informative talk on the national perspective of, uh, retiring various coal plants and its implications, uh, on our national electric grid. Then we had another visit with Valerie Brader. She's, uh, the governor's director for the Michigan Agency on Energy, and she talked about specifically energy in, in the state of Michigan. And if that were hadn't enough, there was another, uh, presentation implementing the EPA's Clean Power Plan in Michigan also. And that was done by Vance Halweg. And, uh, he did a quite, quite a great job too. So, uh, our board at Light Power, as well as your mayor, are up to date on about everything that there is to know about public power. There couldn't be anything more. Anyway, uh, the Biogen Digestor continues to improve its processes. Uh, there's been some new equipment installed, uh, to improve the operating system. And while the system may be only operating at about 50% currently, we're working on pumping that up. The facility was able to run, uh, full 24 hours three consecutive days about two weeks ago and continues to slowly progress. Not quite where we want it to be at yet, but, uh, it's, it's, it's coming along quite well. And then that, uh, the, uh, Light Power staff was involved in the Harvest Festival, was giving, uh, bucket rides and, uh, providing hot dogs and, uh, other giveaways. And I'd like to thank Light Power for stepping up and participating in the Harvest Fest. I think it added to a great deal to the downtown area and they were right there by the chili cook-off, so it all worked out really, really well. Uh, thank you, Greg, for your efforts and everything that Light Power does for us. Uh, Look Committee, uh, will be receiving grant requests, uh, up to, uh, October 30th at 4:00 PM. Uh, they will, they will review the presentations on, uh, four o'clock, uh, November 11th, and then make recommendations on grants, uh, November 18th. That particular meeting, it'll be, uh, Dr. Don Gerard's, uh, last meeting as the chairperson and, uh, last meeting, uh, involved with the Look Committee. Uh, he is, uh, respectfully retiring. Uh, job well done over these many years with the, uh, Ellen Look Committee. And, uh, it will probably be Barbara Brown's last meeting also, as she's, uh, locating just outside the city. And, uh, the good side, uh, Tim, uh, Van Land, who happens to be Dr. Gerard's grandson, uh, will be, uh, I'll be appointing, uh, him, uh, to the, uh, committee at our next meeting. Chris Godbold, who has been on the committee, is, uh, taking over as the chairperson of the Look Committee. But that will all happen after the meeting on, uh, November 18th. So, uh, our best wishes to Dr. Gerard and a great thank you for all of his, his work. And finally, uh, Coffee with Council again. Uh, we'll be relocating, uh, to the Senior Neighbor Center, uh, November 7th, so the first Saturday of the month, from 8 to 10 o'clock, is the Coffee with Council. So if you'd like to come chat with your city council members, uh, that would be a great thing to do, and it will be moved to the Senior Neighbor Center, uh, for November 7th. So a little heads up on that. We'll have another meeting before then on November 2nd, so I'll remind you then too. I think it covers about everything I have to say, so.
Thank you. Several items to report on. The Washington-Jefferson Jackson Streets Project is, uh, racking up. They're working through the restoration process. Uh, we were very fortunate that the weather cooperated, allowing the project to be completed ahead of schedule. Um, in addition, the North Borough High Streets Project is, um, near or at completion. Uh, they may be doing some final restoration there, but I think that one is, is pretty well done. Um, the crush in shape on North Washington has been completed. If you've had a chance to drive up and look at it, uh, it, it, it turns out the original asphalt varied from an inch to three inches. It's probably why there were potholes on top of potholes. Um, but as that happens, you set the milling machine at, at three inches to get all the asphalt and it takes up some of the gravel with it. So we've got some of the base mixed in with the asphalt millings. We did apply the brine. Um, it's a much, much better surface than, than it was, um, but we'll continue to monitor it, especially there's, there's the one area where, um, there, there's a culvert. We'll continue to monitor that culvert and, and watch the street. Um, Ron Woods took our public, uh, works crews to the annual snow pile rodeo held, uh, this past week. Uh, Joe Baker and Ralph Brecken participated in the, uh, driving course. Um, there was also a lot of great information that was shared. Uh, there were, there were 30 total teams, were two from MDOC Rogers, 16 from seven different counties, and, uh, 12 teams from different cities. Uh, the farthest away was Farmington Hills to the east, Cadillac to the north, Portage to the south, and Norton Shores to the west. Uh, there were 50 vendors there that were, uh, displaying their latest products and services. And, um, the drivers were required to attend two classes and, and, um, perform a diagnostic pre-trip. Um, they did a driver responsibility class that was taught by the Michigan State Police, and then, uh, the science of ice control and the five most common ice control mistakes. So hats off to, uh, to, uh, the guys for heading over that and to Joe and Ralph for stepping up and, and, um, participating in the driving course. Um, it was reported already, the FBI with the airport, uh, has given us six months' notice. Um, I had reported early around the fire hydrant painting project, but Jeff Van Siders shared some information with me that, um, our cost for that was $21.34 per hydrant, uh, compared to the $100 per hydrant the last time they were painted. So thanks to Jeff for sprucing up the town and saving money at the same time. Um, just to fast back, there are 277 fire hydrants in the city. Uh, the police department, department was awarded a grant from the Woolbury Community Fund. Um, it was, uh, with more than $8,000 to upscan, or update the LiveScan fingerprinting system and purchase new tasers. The, uh, technology changes on the tasers and, and so we need to replace those and, and upgrade those. The LiveScan update is a cooperative project with Woolbury Schools. We've been partnering with them on fingerprinting system and, and did so again with this grant project. And, uh, City Clerk Stu Alori has been working with a team to conduct interviews for the open deputy court position. Two rounds of, uh, interviews have been completed. Um, a suction has been made. We'll be announcing that, uh, fairly soon. And it says November 9, but it looks like we'll have somebody starting November 16. Um, also wanted to mention to you the, uh, community cleanup, uh, which will be this Saturday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Uh, the community cleanup is a collaborative project with the city of Wool, uh, Woolbury Schools, the Wool Charter Township, Regent's Township, and the Chamber of Commerce. So the five of us have gone together. This is the second thing. Uh, we've done this, had great success last year and hopefully have great success again this year. Uh, that's made part, that's made possible really because of the partners that, that we have joining us. Woollight Power, uh, the Wool Voice Scouts, uh, Padnos is, is working with, uh, with us, and Wool Rotary Club, uh, where we'll have several interact students who will be, uh, working as volunteers to help direct traffic and, and help people unload, uh, things that they would like to get rid of. So again, community cleanup day, Saturday, October 24th, which is this Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM at De Fairgrounds. Um, another item I wanted to mention, this is not my written report, is we had the, um, Board and Commission Workshop with, uh, Peter Letsmann. And one of the things that he mentioned is that all of our boards and commissions really should have rules of procedure. And so, um, we're starting to have that discussion with all of the boards and commissions. Uh, there is a template, uh, that the Michigan Municipal League has available for, for us to use. And so I'm gonna be recommending that perhaps we take that template and, um, use that, uh, as the basis for rules of procedure and, and perhaps all the boards and commissions will be just, uh, interested in adopting the template. So we'll be having some discussion with them, starting with parks tomorrow night. And, uh, finally, I had mentioned if you had any topics you wanted covered at your next workshop next Monday, uh, please let me know. Um, haven't heard of any topics. Uh, we don't really have anything to cover, and so I'm thinking, um, if there's a consensus here, maybe we just cancel the workshop. Um, and, uh, you know, we do have an auction coming up a, a week later. Uh, we know that, uh, we're gonna have at least two new council members, and, uh, so maybe it would be best to just cancel this workshop and then, um, see what the auction results are and then start working with the, with the new council and, you know, working with them to set the agenda. And then that is, all right, that's all I have.
Thank you. Item, uh, number 11, appointments, and, uh, that would be the vacancy that Mr. Hall left us, uh, on the city council. Uh, the city charter indicates that, uh, barring a vacancy, uh, the city council has 30 days, uh, to fill that vacancy for a city council member. And, uh, keeping with respect to that, Mr. Hall passed on, uh, we thought it was September 22nd, but it was September 23rd, a little after 4:00 AM. Uh, but nonetheless, uh, we need to, uh, have that vacancy, uh, filled with his passing by, uh, October 23rd. Uh, that being said, uh, last, uh, meeting, we, uh, discussed a, uh, process for that, for people to, uh, indicate their interest and, and make application. And, uh, three people have, and, uh, it's now our job at this point to, uh, appoint, uh, one of those three, uh, to, uh, fill the vacancy for Mr. Hall, which will be for one council meeting on November 2nd. So we'll have a one-meeting council person. Uh, alphabetically, these three are Don Green, uh, Dave Pasquale, and Alan Teelander. And, uh, so with that, I would open it up to the council for any nominations or to discussion items on, uh, any of these three.
I would like to nominate Alan Teelander.
I would as well. Um, so because he is the only guy that's actually running for the job, that really wants it. The other guys have expressed their intention to just be there for a couple of meetings and just to fill the hole really. And that's all the extent they want to do. I would have to nominate Alan Teelander as well.
Probably. In this case, it would be, I think it's a motion, uh, a second that we have here?
Okay.
A second?
A second.
Uh, we'll, we'll, you know. Well, there's other just discussion on that. And, uh, you have anything to add to it?
Well, to discuss it, yes. You are. Um, I don't think it's fair to put one candidate on, on this, but I think, um, since we're replacing Mr. Hall, that it would be best to put someone in his seat that had similar viewpoints, that was similar to Mr. Hall. I can't think of anyone who's more opposite to Mr. Hall than Mr. Teelander, so that's my comment about that nomination.
I'd just like to say that, uh, I would, similar but not exact, that, uh, my feelings would be that, uh, Mr. Teelander's on the ballot. He will have his opportunity at the ballot box to, uh, uh, secure a position on, on the council, if that be the wishes of, of, of the voters. The other two people, uh, Don Green had served on city council previously for many years, and, uh, Dave Pasquale is a previous city manager who retired after 24 years. And, uh, so these are not Johnny Come-Latelys, uh, but are interested in serving the community for, uh, that one meeting to honor Mr. Hall as well as to, uh, satisfy the city charter. Uh, neither of them are glory seekers, uh, but nonetheless, they would also be informed people who know what's going on within our community. And for that one meeting, it probably serves well. Um, but nonetheless, we have a motion and a second, uh, for Mr. Teelander at this point. All that being said, any other discussion? Okay. Those in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Those opposed?
No.
Oh. Two to two. Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Dave Pasquale.
I would second that motion. Any other discussion?
No.
Okay. And, uh, the vote for Dave Pasquale, all of us in favor?
Yes.
And those opposed?
No, no.
All right.
That leaves Don Green. I'd like to nominate Don Green.
Do we have a consensus here? I have a second motion. Any other discussion? Okay, all of us in favor of Don Green?
Yes.
And those opposed?
No.
All right. I'll turn to our city attorney and say, Mr. White?
Yes.
Where are we at? What, any suggestions?
No, you cannot fill, you cannot comply with the requirements of the charter. Your decision is position vacant until we look.
All right. Um, council's got, so we'll leave the session vacant. Any other discussion? No. But that.
I'm with the adjourn at 8:05.
I'll second. Consensus there. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.